Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the West Windsor Planning Board for November 2nd, 2022. My name is Curtis Hoberman. I serve as the Vice Chair of the Planning Board. And with the absence of Michael Karp, the Planning Board Chair, I will lead tonight's proceedings. My first request, please silence your mobile telephones. Thank you. This is to advise that the notice of the time, date, location, and to the extent known agenda of the subject meeting was prominently posted in the public place reserved for such or similar announcements on October 26, 2022, and transmitted to the Times of Trenton, the Princeton Packet, and the West Windsor and Plainsboro News on October 26, 2022, and filed with the Township Clerk on that same date, October 26, 2022. Cindy, could we please call the roll?
Mr. Lovero? Ms. Bari?
Here.
Mr. Schichtel? Mr. Pankov? Mr. Beg? Ms. Applegate?
Here.
Councilwoman Mandell?
Here.
Mayor Morata?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Hoberman?
Here.
Chairman Karp?
We have a quorum.
We have a quorum. We have, just so you all know this, we have one member out tonight because of illness. We have two members out tonight as they deal with family emergencies. We have two members out tonight as they voted against the approval of the application whose resolution we memorialize this evening. And there exists a vacancy for alternate number two on the planning board. We have five members present. We have a quorum. There will be a period of public comment at the end of the meeting. Each speaker will have three minutes maximum to speak. The period of public comment will be 15 minutes. Um, the first order of business is the consent agenda of the minutes of April 20th, 2022, September 28th, 2022, and the closed session minutes of September 28th, 2022. Do any members want to pull minutes for further consideration?
Yes, good evening. Mr. Hoberman, we're going to pull, just for later consideration, the minutes for the closed meetings. And the reason for that is because there's one change that needs to be made, which typically gets done in closed session. So we're going to reserve that to the end, so as not to tie up the meeting ahead of that.
Thank you for that. Um, do any members want to pull either the April minutes or the September minutes from the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, it's been moved by Councilwoman Mandell, seconded by Mayor Morata, uh, to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Yeah. I abstain from September 28th. I missed that meeting, so I see I do April 20th. I abstain from September 28th.
And I abstain from the April 20th, um, minutes.
All those in favor say aye then. Aye. The, uh, have passed. Um, okay, uh, what you're here for. Uh, tonight's the Mobile Planning Board is to review and approve the resolution of memorialization of the, in the matter of the application of Bridgepoint West Windsor LLC for preliminary and final major subdivision, preliminary and final major site plan Phase 1, and preliminary major site plan approval Phase 2 with waivers. This is application PB 21-15, and approval with conditions and waivers was granted by the Planning Board on June 29th, 2022. It's, it has been just past four months since the approval of the application. It has taken time to record correctly all the conditions and to have full staff review of the resolution and conditions. Uh, the applicant has also had review of the resolution and conditions by the many parties and consultants connected to the application. There have been four other Planning Board resolutions of memorialization that have required approval before the consideration of this present application. Uh, my, my colleagues on the board, we will review your considerations for the resolution first uh, as, as you have, uh, questions or clarifications for the resolution. And then we will review the conditions, uh, for the application. Uh, Martina, can you take it from here and give us an overview of the resolution and then, uh?
Certainly. Thank you. Um, for anyone who doesn't know me, I'm Martina Bailey. I'm the Board Attorney. Uh, I work with Joey Muller, who was here for most of the hearings. Um, just, just to be clear, I'll just elaborate a little bit. This application has been approved. It was approved by a vote of six to two at the meeting, uh, on June 29th. What's happening tonight is not a vote to approve that application. It has been approved. What's happening tonight is a vote to adopt, uh, the resolution, which sets forth the record and the findings of fact by this board to support that decision. Um, so just to be clear, we're not opening this proceeding to additional input from the public. You'll have a chance to comment at the end of this meeting as you do, um, after the, the vote. Um, and so what we're going to do is, is, is give the Board members here an opportunity to ask questions about the draft. And the draft resolution is a document that we do for every land use application. It's prepared by council, by my office. It's, um, vetted quite thoroughly by the staff at West Windsor, by all of the experts, by the engineer, by the land use architect, by the planner, um, and by our traffic consultant in addition to, um, being shared with the applicant, um, for their review. Um, and that's what we've done in this case. It was a very, very, um, extensive preparation. Um, there was a lot of testimony, um, which has been summarized and which you'll see that the, the resolution itself will be published after today's vote, after some time. And so what we're doing today is really, um, the Board is, it will have a chance to ask questions, um, to clarify things, to point out some typos. There, there were some typos in the draft that has been shared. Um, but it's really not to make any substantial changes to that draft. Um, so what we're going to do is just, um, give the Board a chance to, to ask those questions. And then what I'm going to do is read off, um, the list of conditions, which is at the end of the resolution. And those are the, the conditions that were discussed quite extensively at the June 29th meeting, which was the meeting where the Board voted. Um, I'll point out, um, ways in which those conditions were slightly modified as discussed at that meeting, and just a couple that have been added since, pretty standard conditions. Um, so, so everybody here will know what those conditions are. Um, as I think most of you know, probably, this is, um, an application for preliminary and final uh, major site plan and subdivision approval for Phase 1, um, and preliminary approval for, for Phase 2 of a project. This involves a 5.5 plus million square foot warehouse that's been proposed. Um, uh, the, the southerly corner of the intersection of Route 1 and Quaker Bridge, which you may know as the former Cyanide site, most of which is now referred to as the Planned Commercial District. That was a zoning district that was, um, implemented um, as part of a settlement agreement a couple of years ago. And this background, by the way, all of this background is in the resolution. So it's, it, it should be very clear. Um, and among other things, it permitted warehouse use. Um, not only did it permit warehouse use, it actually encourages warehouse for that particular site. Um, as you know, well, a, as, as many of you know, there was a settlement agreement in 2020 that was entered, uh, to settle some litigation over the zoning of that property. And as part of that, a concept plan was introduced for this particular project. Um, and as, as a, as a result of that settlement, the Planned Commercial District Zone was, uh, was passed. And that went through the normal legislative process with public hearings. Um, so that settlement con- concept was, was part of the, 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 the site plan was part of the settlement, which formed the basis of that, that zone, that zone district. Um,
Order, please. Please continue, Martina.
Um, the application, the applicant requested some relief. Importantly, there was no variance relief required with this application, and that's significant. Um, rather, there was, um, a, a request for some waivers, some design waivers, which, um, are deviations from some of the design standards of the district. And I'll go through that list. That's been publicly available. Um, those related parking and loading, to signage landscaping and lighting, and some stormwater management. There were some, some checklist waivers as well, which are fairly routinely granted. Um, and as I said, in addition, there were a number of conditions that were imposed as part of the Board's, uh, decision to grant the approval in this case. And I, I will go through those conditions. So you'll know, um, what, what to look for when you review and see the, uh, the resolution that's published. Um, so as a preliminary matter, I, I'll open it to the Board to, uh, pose questions. I know we have received a couple of, um, comments from, um, Board Member Mandell. Um, Andrea, would you like to take us through those or, or should I?
Um, but whatever's easier, I can just take you quickly through there. Uh, I just wanted to make a, wh- when you said that there were a couple of changes, you mean there were a couple of changes. Um, as of June 29th, basically, this is, this is what was voted on for June 29th.
Yes, that, that's correct.
Confirm that. I, I think that was a little confusing when you said that.
That's correct. You'll see that the, um, conditions in the resolution are substantially as they were discussed at that meeting. Um, the, the changes, um, subsequent to that meeting, um, are maybe there were maybe four additional conditions, which were very standard, one of which was just missed, but it, it, it's uncontroversial. And there's one more that I'll point out. Um, but, um, but as I said, everything was, was voted on and approved at that meeting.
As Board Members, uh, make, uh, certifications, uh, please note the paragraph number as well as the page number so we can be within. Thank you.
Okay, um, I'll just quickly go, uh, page two, uh, number three, um, first, second line that should read Route 1 corridor, Nassar Park, um, Nassar Park Pavilion Shopping Center. Um,
Name correction.
Name correction. These are, hey, um, the reports and submissions, um, I had asked that, uh, were available. Some additional dates be added to the documents just for clarity. Um, I don't know if you want to go through any, any of that, like which ones you're adding dates to, Martina?
Sure, sure. There's a long list of, of, um, items that were submitted. Um, on page 10, you see some, in the middle of that list, there's a photo report. We'll add the date of November, uh, 12th, 2021 for that item. The last two bullets on that page, the application package from NJDEP, that will get the date of November 12th, uh, 2021 with a revised date of March 30th, 2022. And then the application package itself, um, was dated November 11th, uh, 21 with a revision through, uh, March 29th and 2022.
Thank you. Uh, page 13, I'm, was, uh, second up from the bottom. I'm just correcting the spelling. It's, uh, Khurram Wahid. K-H-U-R-R-A-M. If he's here and I've misspelled it, please let me know.
And I want to go back on that. On page 11, uh, West Windsor Citizens, uh, the second bullet point is Doreen, D-O-R-B-E-N, Garrelic, G-A-R-E-L-I-C-K. That's the spelling of her name. Thank you.
Hey, I'm going up to 20, so if anybody else wants to jump in before. Um, and in number 37, um, where we say, uh, he agreed the applicant would look into having the path commemorated in some way and connecting to the existing sidewalk that crosses the Amtrak line. And after the word "way," I'm just adding to commemorate General Washington's march during the Revolutionary War.
Um, Andrea, that is addressed in a condition. It wasn't part of the testimony.
Oh, okay. Um, all right. I thought it was, had been part of the discussion too, as to what we're actually commemorating. All I was doing is, um, I know it's in the condition. I was just trying to clarify that I, um, the testimony. Uh, number 27, really easy. On the second line, Costco has C-O-S-T-C-O. And on the fourth line, um, the word where it says entering and existing per day, it should be entering and exiting per day. Sorry if this is really boring to everybody. Can you, can you say? Page 27, um, exiting, the word exiting, not existing. After it says 19,000 vehicles entering and exiting per day in Nassar Park, in Nassar Park.
Andrea, which paragraph? Page 27?
Uh, one, two, fourth, fourth line.
Yeah, there's numbers, 63, 64, 65.
I'm not on mine.
There are numbers for each paragraph.
I don't have numbers on my paragraph. I'm sorry. Okay. I'm sorry. I printed this up. Um, oh, I'm sorry. It's 62. That was on the other page before. Yep. Okay. On page 42 in 119, paragraph 119, second to the last line, that should say six to two instead of seven to two.
Which, which you are agreeing to entering?
Um, 119.
119, uh, second to last line.
Page 42.
Page 42.
What was incorrect? I can't hear you. I can't.
The vote, it's six to two. It was incorrect.
It, uh, it said there was, okay. Okay, uh, page 51, um, number 142, where it's automobile traffic. Um, one, two, three, four, six up from the bottom, uh, spelled, uh, Costco has a T in it. And third up from the bottom, there's a T in Costco. Okay, and on page 56, um, 150, uh, paragraph 156, uh, the, um, where it says, uh, one, two, the fourth line up in that paragraph, uh, it says June 10th, 2022, uh, of, I added the word draft warehouse on that. Moving along, page, uh, 57, uh, paragraph 158. And it says, uh, third line down on that says, "and post occupancy," that should be, um, I mean, post-construction, that should be post-occupancy, I believe. And on the end of that paragraph, um, we should not, we should note that additional conditions were added at the meeting on June 29th, because they, those were not in the, um, original document. Uh, they were not in the original list of what conditions were going to be. They were added at the, um, uh, meeting where the, um, document, uh, where the, uh, application was approved. Hey.
Andrea, this is, this is Sam here. I think it is post-construction on line two of 158, because you want to get this line?
Sure, because I thought there was, it's, it's both. Um, it says here, we're going to do air quality studies both after construction. Okay, that's post-construction, so that's already in there. And then it says, if it says, uh, post-construction, then that would be in there twice. I think the idea was after construction was going to be the baseline, and then after occupancy was going to be, we were going to see what the change was?
Well, maybe, well, you want to have a, you want, we want to have a sample taken before construction starts, and then one after construction's finished.
Well, then we have to, okay, it says, studies both after construction and post what? Because then you don't have anything about before construction.
That's what you need to do in order to get to determine a baseline.
Okay, then we'd have to add that. Then we have to add one or the other. This both, these both say the same thing.
There's, okay, there's a condition about this, and I'm just checking what that says, so.
And I think I did check it, and that's what it was, the original conditions.
Any other items?
Uh, let's see, is it that page? Um, page 72, um, in their SI, um, this, uh, what we're trying to do is make sure that the applicant had all categories, but he's doing a, a number of different reports um, for, um, for how he's handling trying to reduce traffic. And so we wanted the reports to all have the same categories in them at, at different times. So it should say the applicant shall include the same categories of information I have in all the reports. So it's a little, I think that makes it a little clearer. I think that was the original way it was written, and it may have lost it somewhere. In page 76, um, under ZZ, it's, uh, the second line should say the warehouses shall comply with the New Jersey Solar Ready Law. Just add the word ready in there. And that's all I have. If somebody could check on that, uh, post, um, construction.
You were right. It's post-occupancy.
It was. Yeah, I had checked the original conditions when I did this. All right. Um, that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, one, one name correction, page 13. Second last, it should be K-H-U-R-R-A-M.
Oh, yeah, I did, I did that.
You done it.
Are there any other, uh, clarification provisions to the resolution of memorialization? Before we actually go through conditions?
On page 75.
Or is it? Page 75?
Several conditions. Conditions, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I'll wait till conditions.
Okay, very good. Thank you. That's, that is the next, our, our next. Any other certifications on resolution of memorialization?
Oh, um, did I correct one of that seven? Because I think it was in, where it was supposed to be six? Out of, um, because I believe it was in two places, and I'm not sure if I just missed it.
I think it was in three places. It'll be correct.
So it's all correct. It'll be corrected. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on, uh, to the, uh, conditions. Uh, Martina, would you please move on?
Sure. So what I'm looking at is, um, um, you, you, you'll recall, um, if you were following the, the hearings, that a, a, a list of proposed, uh, potential conditions was publicly posted prior to the June 29th meeting, which is where the Board voted. Um, and what that was, was a, a, a list, um, that formed the basis of the list that you'll see in the condit- in the resolution, um, with some changes that were discussed, um, at that meeting. What I'm going to do is read through what's in the resolution and just point out what was discussed at the meeting and what was changed to that list. I'll refer to the numbering in that list. It's a little confusing because what's in the resolution is, is actually, um, lettered items. So it doesn't correspond exactly to the numbers, but the categories are the same. The order is more or less the same if you're following that list. Um, and, um,
So I would say with each item gives both the letters and the number.
Sure.
Thank you.
Oh, sure. Yes. Yes, I'll just go over the, the list of waivers. Um, there was no change in the list of waivers.
Um, the only thing that changed was a reference which was incorrect. Again, the list of waivers was also publicly posted. Um, the list is exactly the same. The only thing that changed was that for the signage, the reference to the, um, ordinance um, was incorrect. It's the same exact provision, but it referred to the residential standards and not the commercial standards. But the wording of the ordinance is exactly the same. So the only thing that you'll see is different is the reference to the ordinance number. But, um, I can go through that list of waivers.
She has a question.
No, that's all.
Oh, that's all. No.
And again, this was the only relief that was requested by the applicant. Um, I believe it was a list of 14, starting with the parking and loading. First of all, from section 200 dash 28D to subsection B, requiring a waiver to exceed the required off-street parking and loading requirements or 1,754 spaces, whereas 2,201 parking spaces, including 200 banked spaces, are proposed. Uh, from section 200 dash 27D1, permitting 147 loading bays, whereas 910 loading bays are proposed. Uh, signage, there were four signage-related, uh, waivers from section 200 dash 32B8C, which permits a maximum size of two square foot feet for instructional signage, whereas instructional signage of 12 square feet is proposed. From section 200 dash 32B11B, which permits a maximum height, uh, of eight inches for street address signage, whereas street address signage with a height of 24 inches is proposed. From section 200 dash 32B3B, which permits a maximum sign area, including structure of 48 square foot, uh, for monument signs, whereas monument signage of squi- 60 square feet, including structure, is proposed. From section 200 dash 32B3C, which permits a maximum sign height, including structure and sign area of four feet, whereas monument signage 16 feet high, including structure and sign area, is proposed. Moving on to landscaping, from section 200 dash 13C3E.
I'm sorry, let's go back to that. We just talked about in terms of the monument signage on page 62B.
Yes.
Was that waiver accepted?
Two, two waivers were denied. Um, two of the sign waivers. I'll tell you which ones.
If, if, if I should go through the waivers, if a waiver had been denied, please state that.
Yes, yes. Thank you, Curtis. I'll just make sure. It was two of the signage waivers were actually denied. Um.
So let's go back to, uh, the one we just talked about for clarity sake. Um, it's E, letter E, page 62.
Yes, the two, the two sign waivers that were voted down by a vote of eight to zero, um, were the, uh, the waiver from section 200 dash 32B3B permitting a maximum sign area, including structure of 48 square feet for monument size, whereas, uh, whereas monument signage of 60 square feet, including structure, was proposed. And the other one was from section 200 dash 32B3C, permitting a maximum sign height, including structure and sign area of four feet, whereas a monument signage of 16 feet high plus structure and sign area was proposed. Um, the reasons for the Board's vote are set forth in the resolution. Um, and essentially had to do with the, the, the scale and the size of the buildings would be large enough, um, that they would be visible without needing, uh, signage that was of the scale that was being proposed. Um, and because monument signage functions a little bit differently from instructional and address signage, um, it was felt that, that denying this relief was appropriate, um, whereas, um, granting the relief for the other signage um, was, was appropriate. So, um, I'm going to go through the landscaping. Two waivers from section 200 dash 13C3E, requiring trees of five or more inches in caliper to be located and identified, whereas such trees, um, are not being identified. And just to clarify, it's not that they're not being. not that they're not being identified, but the method for identifying that was not, um, entirely consistent with, with the way the ordinance is written. Uh, and there's a condition in this approval, um, that addresses that, which is that the applicant would agree to grid out a cer-, a certain area of the trees in order to come up with an estimate of the number. The sheer size of this site is almost seven hundred, uh, sorry, five hundred and thirty-nine acres of a larger tract just made it, um, unduly burdensome to, to count all of the trees and that's why that was, that was granted. Um, the second landscaping waiver was from section two hundred dash ninety-one P five B four, requiring one four-inch caliper tree for every forty linear feet of building perimeter for buildings over ten thousand square feet to be planted within seventy-five feet of the building, whereas four-inch caliper trees are proposed to be planted within a hundred feet of the building. With respect to lighting, these are all quite similar. So, um, let's point out one, two, three, four lighting waivers. Uh, in the first instance, from dash, from two hundred dash twenty-nine G one, requiring all parking areas to be lit, uh, to provide a minimum of three-point-oh-foot candles at driveway intersections with main roads and a total average illumination of zero-point-five-foot candle, uh, throughout the parking area, whereas an average light intensity for the parking areas of between one-point-seven and two-point-oh for candles for passenger car parking and between two-point-two and two-point-four for truck parking is proposed.
Did, did you skip page sixty-four?
Yeah, yeah. Little finish lighting.
Finish lighting, then go back to what we're going to go back.
We'll go back to stormwater management. Could be that, that, that list. So we'll go through lighting. And it could be that the order in the introduction there is actually switched in the body, which, um, is an easy fix. It's just a formatting thing. So, um, the second lighting, uh, waivers from section two hundred dash thirty-one K one, requiring light levels in parking lots to be an average of zero-point-five-foot candles throughout, whereas average illumination of pa-, of passenger parking areas is proposed to be between one-point-seven and two-point-zero for candles, with zero-point-five-foot candles being the minimum spot illumination. An average illumination of truck parking areas, uh, proposed to be between two-point-two and two-point-four for candles, with zero-point-five being the minimum spot value. Um, the next waiver is from section two hundred dash thirty-one K two, requiring light levels at intersections to be three-point-zero for candles, whereas the proposed average light levels at intersections range from three-point-one to four-point-four for candles. And finally, from section two hundred dash thirty-one K three, requiring no more than, um, A one, uh, intensity in foot candles at p-, at property lines, whereas greater intensity in foot candles at property lines is proposed at driveway intersections with Clarksville Road. Um, and finally, on stormwater management, uh, two waivers from section two hundred dash ninety-one P four A one A, uh, requiring stormwater detention, um, areas to be graded creatively to blend into the surrounding landscape and imitate the natural depression within a regular edge, which is quoted from the ordinance. Whereas the proposed landscaping design does not conform strictly with this requirement. And then from, from two hundred dash two oh seven point four U seven, uh, requiring that suitably landscaped and bermed stormwater basement, basins may be located within any yard setback or landscape buffers, provided that a maximum of fifty percent of the basin may be located within the buffer area, whereas eight stormwater basement, basins located entirely within the buffer area are proposed. As I said, the re-, the reasoning for the board's findings and for granting the relief in all but two of those waivers is set forth in some detail in the resolution. Um, there's a fairly long list of checklist waivers. Do you want me to go through those? I think they're all fairly standard. Again, the reasons, most of those relate to, uh, an instance where preliminary, it, most, most of those relate to items.
Yeah, I'd say, let's go, please, let's go through. Please, please.
Not standard, not correct. I'm not standard.
Yeah.
Public comment is reserved at the end of.
Yes, we, uh, the, the, the checklist waivers, um, are summarized.
There's, Jared, public comments will be at the end of the meeting. That's the nature of how we've structured this meeting. This is the resolution of memorialization. We are not doing any new testimony tonight. Um, we are going over this resolution of memorialization on an action of approvals of the application with waivers, with conditions. That is where you're at in the procedure of the review of this application before the many. Martina, continue, please.
I'm, I'm moving on to conditions. We're moving on to conditions now. So, I'm very sorry. Now is not the time for public comment. You have to wait until the end.
Public comment, definitely.
So the conditions, I'm going to refer to the numbers in the document entitled Bridge Point Potential Condition, which was publicly posted before the meeting. Um, and then I'll refer to the letters draft resolution to indicate that it's either the same or I'll, I'll show you what the change is. So number one in the document entitled Bridge Point Pretenditions was, uh, seen. The first and the paragraph number is, I think you wrote, um, one sixty-five, one hundred and sixty-five A, revised to be consistent with exhibit A three, plan rendering phase May eleventh, twenty-twenty-two, exhibit four, plan rendering phase eleven, prepared by Langen, testimony of the applicant's witnesses and these conditions. There was no change to that condi-, condition. Number two, uh, which corresponds to paragraph one sixty-five B in the, in the resolution, at least two permanent benchmarks are equate to fourteen benchmarks for the block eight tract and fourteen benchmarks for the, uh, fifteen-point-four tract. Uh, benchmark monumentation satisfactory to the township engineer should be provided during compliance review. The notes on sheets four and five deletion shall be deleted. There was no change to this. Number, um, the applicant shall secure an NJDEP watershed and land management permit for all required approvals based on the wetlands delineation as shown on the freshwater wetlands letter of interpretation pre-, previously issued by D, DEP. The only change was the addition of the word, the applicant shall, uh, NJDEP, otherwise no change. And that was four of the original. Uh, was any significant changes subsequent amended approval and an application therefore shall be submitted. Um, that corresponds to the resolution. Any changes by the board attorney in consultation with municipal staff subsequent to this approval will require an amended approval and an application shall be submitted to the township. Subdivision plat, all parcels and points to be created should be submitted, deed and easement instruments should be submitted to the board attorney and be subject to his ru-, review and approval. That corresponds to five E in the, the resolution. There was no two phases, with phase one consisting of buildings B one, E one, and C one and associated improvements, and with phase two comprising the remaining B one, B two one, B two two, and D one. Phasing plans that def-, definitively show the limits of all phase one construction, including grading, utility, and stormwater installation, while graying out everything that is part of phase two shall be provided. The detailed development plans, site plans, utility plans, et cetera, shall each identify the limits of phase one and phase two and depict proposed site conditions at phase one completion prior to phase two commencement, similar to what was proposed for phase one grading plans. This is in addition to the overall site plan and utility phase one drawings. Uh, this corresponds to, to one sixty-five F in the resolution. There was no change. Number seven, the plans should be clarified to show that the bike path will be, uh, composed of asphalt and the sidewalks will be composed of concrete. That's one sixty-five G from the resolution and there was no change. Number eight, the applicant shall adhere to New Jersey law with respect to electric vehicle charging stations, signs and symbols slash markings. One sixty-five H in the resolution, there was no change. Number nine, the land use, land cover chart, which is table six in the E I S, which is the environmental impact statement, should be clarified to make clear if the lands remaining along Quaker Bridge Road are included or not included. In addition, the E I S should be revised in a manner satisfactory to the board landscape architect to correct discrepancies between the chart and the narrative. That corresponds to one sixty-five I. The only change was the addition of the word township to modify landscape architect. There's a. Number ten, uh, the applicant shall work with the township staff on the type of eight-foot-high wooden fence that is behind the vegetation on Quaker Bridge Road. The staff will have the final decision-making power with respect thereto. That corresponds to one sixty-five J in the resolution, which was modified very slightly to say the applicant shall work with the township staff on the type and material of eight-foot-high fence, et cetera. Number eleven, uh, all of the berms on Clarksville Road should be installed during and included in phase one. Uh, one sixty-five K in the resolution, no change. Uh, number twelve, standards for the incorporation of accessory structures such as guardhouses, emergency generators, sheds, and outdoor material storage and fencing therefore, shall be addressed with the first tenant proposing, uh, the same comes in, when the first tenant proposing the same comes in with a site plan or building permit application providing for the same. That's one sixty-five, um, L in the resolution and there's no change. Moving on to the traffic, access, circulation, and parking related conditions. Now, there was quite a bit of change here, so I'll, I'll go over these in, in detail. Originally, uh, number thirteen in the proposed list set, stated as follows, until DOT issues a permit for the construction of the connection between the master plan road and Route one, no warehouse construction shall begin on either phase one or phase two. Um, that condition was broken out in the current resolution as follows. Um, section please. Um, and that corresponds to one sixty-five M, M, uh, little I, M, uh, I'm going to ask it to, I think it refers to I I, and N, N little I and N, um, I I. So, M, uh, no warehouse construction shall begin on either phase one or phase two until both of the following occur. First, the DOT issues a permit for the construction of the conti- for the construction of the connect, connection between the master plan road and US Route one, and the Avalon Road and Quaker Ri-, Bridge Road signalized intersection is approved by all parties having jurisdiction in accordance with the board-approved plans. Next, no certificate of occupancy or temporary certificate of occupancy shall be in, issued until both of the following occur. First, the master plan road is fully constructed and operational in accordance with the approved plans, including the intersection with US Route one, and the Avalon Road and Quaker Bridge Road signalized intersection is fully operational in accordance with the approved plans. Number fourteen in the original list, said signage shall be installed at a location and in a form acceptable to the township engineer and the township traffic engineer barring turns eastbound by trucks from the development directly onto Clarksville Road from the master plan road, with accompanying, uh, accompanying geometry changes as necessary to the intersection of Clarksville Road and the master plan road to the extent acceptable to the county. That corresponds to one sixty-five O in the resolution and that reads as follows, signage shall be installed at locations and in a form acceptable to the township engineer and the township traffic engineer barring turns eastbound in the direction of Princeton Heights Town Road by trucks from the development directly onto Clarksville Road from the master plan road, with accompanying geometry changes as necessary to the intersection of Clarksville Road and the master plan road to create a physical barrier on both sides of Clarksville Road to prevent trucks turning eastbound in the direction of Princeton Heights Town Road. Turning rules shall be enforceable by West Windsor Police. Signage and accompanying geometry changes should be subject to county approval as necessary. Now, um, the next condition was newly added, uh, but it, it was discussed at the meeting on June twenty-ninth, and that is one sixty-five P in the resolution. It states township and the applicant shall work together to obtain county approval for the signage and geometry changes barring eastbound turns by trucks from the development onto Clarksville Road, and shall work together to apply for no turns by trucks onto Clarksville Road from Route five seventy-one, which is Princeton Heights Town Road. Going back to the list, number fifteen, no curb cuts shall be permitted on Clarksville Road except where it intersects with the master plan road. One sixty-five Q in the resolution, no curb cuts should be permitted on Clarksville Road except where it intersects with the master plan road and for at least one emergency vehicle access point, subject to the approval and recommendation of the West Windsor Township Fire and Emergency Services Chief. Number sixteen, the intersection of the master plan road and Route one shall be constructed as soon as the DOT permit therefore is issued. One sixty-five R in the resolution, no change. Now, numbers seventeen and eighteen in the original list, oh, were consolidated, so I'll read both of those. Traffic reports should be prepared by the applicant upon the full occupancy of phase one and for three consecutive years, starting with the first anniversary of the occupancy of phase two. Number eighteen states, the traffic reports shall include information as to how the tenants are advised of and are implementing means and methods of traffic reduction through ride-share shuttles to and from the P, uh, Princeton Junction Train Station and other public transportation opportunities. The tenant information shall include what amenities are being provided to keep employees on campus or provide options to use personal vehicles such as bike share, e-scooter share. Uh, the applicant shall include the same categories of information in the reports. That corresponds to paragraph one sixty-five S, S little I and S, um, I I. So S states, traffic reports shall be prepared by the applicant upon the full occupancy of phase one and for three consecutive years, starting with the first anniversary of the occupancy of phase one. The traffic reports shall include, in addition to standard distances, all signalized intersections through the full length of Clarksville Road in West Windsor. Uh, little I states, the traffic reports shall include information as to how the tenants are advised of and are implementing means and methods of traff-, traffic reduction through ride-share shuttles to and from the Princeton Junction Train Station and other public transportation opportunities. The tenant information shall include what amenities are being provided to keep employees on campus or provide options to use personal vehicles such as bike share, e-scooter share. The applicant shall include the same categories for information in the reports, which is largely the same. And then, um, we broke this out. It's the second little I, I I. The applicant shall share all the traffic reports with the township engineer and township traffic consultant. Uh, number nineteen in the list, parking spaces for temporary trailer storage are being provided with each building. The developer's agreement shall include a provision stating, um, setting forth what controls will be implemented to prevent misuse, storage of other goods or materials, tractor, truck, parking, et cetera. Trailer parking spaces shall be restricted to storage of disconnected trailers only in good working order. The only change to that, and this is one sixty-five T in the resolution, was in the last sentence of that condition, trailer parking spaces should be restricted to storage of disconnected licensed trailers only in good working order. Number twenty, the master plan road, per the subdivision plat, provides for a ten-foot bikeway and five-foot sidewalk. The applicant is provided for a single crossing of this road between Clarksville Road and Route one. A rectangular rapid flashing beacon for pedestrian safety, due to the width of the road and volume of traffic expected, should be installed when warrant, uh, when warrants support installation. That's one sixty-five U in the resolution and there was no change to that. Number twenty-one, the applicant shall continue the trail connection towards Bear Brook Road per the master plan circulation plan element, which is map two and quad one, using the sewer easement to the end of the property. That's one sixty-five V of the resolution. The only change here was the applicant shall construct the trail connection towards Bear Brook Road, et cetera. Number twenty-two, the applicant shall work with NJ Transit if NJ Transit decides to pursue bus routes adjacent to or within the development. Uh, the applicant shall install bumpouts and maintain shelters if bus routes are provided for. Typical construction details should be added to the plans and construction drawings when and if NJ Transit identifies the location. This is one sixty-five W in the resolution. There was no change to that. Paragraph twenty-three, uh, the applicant shall provide sufficient grade information at all barrier-free ramps, parking spaces, and accessible routes to building entrances to determine compliance with barrier-free standards. Ten scale detailed enlargements of the same shall be used as necessary to provide legible information. The details provided, three sheets all labeled, uh, C G four oh one, address only parking stalls and they do not provide ramps to the adjacent sidewalk network. In addition to adding accessible ramp, access to all accessible straws, detailed grading of all crosswalks and ramps shall be provided. One sixty-five X in the resolution, no change. Uh, number twenty-four, filings shall be provided and appropriately marked at the direction of Chief Lynch, um, of West Windsor. This is one sixty-five Y in the resolution, no change. Number twenty-five, the developer's agreement shall include language on timely repair by the applicant of deterioration of local roads attributed to construction traffic. This is, uh, one sixty-five Z in the resolution. And this was reworded to say prior to construction, as part of the pre-construction meeting with municipal staff, the applicant shall provide proposed construction routes, including video documentation of the pre-construction condition of the roads within the township used for construction access and deliveries. Twenty-six. Um, there was no change to the next four, but I'll, I'll read them all. Um, the applicant shall provide design hourly volumes requested by DOT for, for the Clarksville Road Meadow Road intersection. Uh, that's, uh, one sixty-five A. Uh, that's, uh, one sixty five AA in the resolution, no change. Number twenty seven, the applicant shall coordinate with the county to optimize signal time and timings on Quaker Bridge Road with the proposed signal at Lawrence Station Road. That's one sixty five BB, uh, in the resolution, no change. Number twenty eight, the applicant shall meet with staff to discuss traffic signing and the traffic signing plan that has been provided. Discussion shall focus on choice and placement with signage, both of which should be subject to the review and approval of the township engineer and township traffic consultant. One sixty five CC in the resolution, no change. Uh, number twenty nine, two hundred parking spaces for automobiles are proposed to be banked. If the applicant wishes to install some or all of them, it shall engage with township staff as to their location, whether to install them and where. She'll be subject to the review and approval of the township staff. The staff on its own, uh, on its own initiative may require that some or all of the banked spaces be installed. And that's, um, the resolution, one sixty five DD, there was no change to that. Number thirty, the applicant shall coordinate with Mercer County and the township engineer to extend, uh, the proposed shared path southerly as far as practical towards the Amtrak Overpass with an available right of way NJDEP permitting constraints and grading constraints as may be approved by Mercer County. It's one sixty five EE. The only change here was that the applicant shall coordinate with Mercer County and the township engineer to extend the proposed shared path along Quaker Bridge Road as far as practical. Number thirty one, no automobile parking outside the automobile parking areas or truck parking outside of the truck parking areas shall be permitted. That's one sixty five FF in the resolution, no change. Uh, number thirty two on sheet C, uh, CS one hundred, the driveway connecting building C one to the roadway between C one and B one should be either eliminated or moved more to the northeast. That's one sixty five GG. The only change here was to add the words, subject to the approval of the township traffic consultant at the end. Number thirty three, the applicant shall coordinate the design of the Quaker Bridge Road widening with Mercer County with consideration of future potential changes to the Lawrence Station Road intersection location previously considered by Mercer County. That's one sixty five HH in the resolution, um, no change. Number thirty four, the applicant shall arrange for Title thirty nine enforcement on the site. That's one sixty five II, uh, and the addition of the words by West Windsor Police at the end of that. Now, the next condition was, was newly added. Um, and this was introduced by Ms. Mandel at the, at the meeting, so it was discussed and identified. And that reads, as part of a submission of an application for final site plan approval for phase two, the applicant shall work with the township engineer and traffic consultant to review ways in which the plan may be modified to further limit truck traffic on Clarksville Road. The plan shall address truck traffic coming from Princeton Heights Town Road into the warehouse site. Again, a newly added condition, one sixty five KK. Uh, the applicant agrees to the employment of best practices for reducing diesel emissions on site and in the site surroundings and to require the same in its tenant leases. This includes no idling and violation of state code and the use of particulate filters, which also require best practices in truck maintenance and operation. Again, that was discussed and, um, introduced by Board Member Mandel. Moving on to the next category, which is noise. Number thirty five, um, the need, value and potential to employ measures to limit or diminish nighttime noise production at the facilities closest to residential areas shall be addressed when building A one comes in for final approval in phase two. This shall include operational equipment on trucks and at the docks, including pneumatic dock levelers, compression brakes are prohibited. This became, uh, two separate conditions in the resolution, one sixty five LL and MM. LL reads the following, the need, value and potential to employ measures to limit or diminish nighttime noise production at the facilities closest to the residential areas shall be addressed when the applicant applies for final site plan approval for building A one. The applicant shall assess the need and value of potential noise reduction measures, such as the use of certain operational equipment on trucks and at the docks, including pneumatic dock levelers, compression brakes are prohibited. MM reads, prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, the township shall engage a professional sound specialist to do a base study of the noise level to assess the sound levels to ensure that the applicant complies with the noise regulations. The sound specialist shall do another noise test post occupancy of each phase two building to ensure compliance with noise regulations. If the original test or subsequent test indicate the state or local code standards are violated, the applicant shall take corrective steps to comply. The applicant shall pay for the noise study. Uh, item thirty six was consolidated into what I just read. Uh, originally that read, monitoring of actual sound levels should be undertaken by the applicant, subject to the re-review and approval of township staff at the completion of occupancy of each phase two building. So that was consolidated into what I just read. Number thirty seven, the post-construction noise study of the phase two wall should be evaluated for state and township compliance. It should be subject to the review and approval by township staff. Again, that was consolidated into those two LL and MM. Thirty two, thirty eight, sorry, the health department shall have access to do further testing whenever it desires without notice to the applicant or tenants upon completion of the first phase one or two building or any other phase one or two improvements. That's one sixty five NN in the resolution, there was no change to that. Number thirty nine, the developer's agreement, subject to the review and approval of the board attorney and recorded by the board attorney, shall, shall indicate when testing, as set forth herein, may occur and containing the requirement of remedial action if township and state standards are violated. This resolution shall be attached to it. Uh, that's one sixty five OO in the resolution and there's no change to that. Um, item forty, if noise studies or measurements in response to complaints show that the, the state or township DBA maximum, maximum are exceeded, remediation will be necessary. The applicant shall make, uh, shall make, subject to the review and approval of township staff, such operational or other changes as are necessary to comply. It's one sixty five PP in the resolution and there was no change to that. Um, the next set of conditions relate to landscape and conservation. Number forty one, the conservation easements associated with the environmentally constrained lands, subject to DEP of, uh, review and approval on these properties shall include the township and thus establish the recorded green belt in this area. That's one sixty five QQ of the resolution and there's no change to that. Um, item forty two, the means of demarcating the conservation easement lines on the property, e.g., the green, the green belt monuments, shall be subject to the review and approval by the township staff. That's one sixty five RR in the resolution, there was no change to that. Uh, number forty three, the May twenty five, twenty twenty two air quality statement shall be included in the record. That's one sixty five SS of the resolution and that was elaborated on. So it says, what the May twenty fifth, twenty twenty two air quality statement shall be included in the record. A further air quality study shall be done, A, after construction of phase one improvements, but prior to any building occupancy, to provide a baseline and B, post-occupancy, and these shall include a measure of particular matter and solids. Number forty four, a note shall be added to the plans, providing for review by staff of fencing as building permits are applied for each building. The fencing established shall be designed to mitigate wildlife impacts that could be the result of any fencing. This is one sixty five TT in the resolution and there's no change to that. Number forty five, the final planting schedule should be amended to include additional plant size range specification, including the height for calipper trees and height and spread for shrubs. This is one sixty five UU in the resolution, there's no change. Number forty six, a note should be inserted on the final landscape plans, indicating that an additional ground level utility elements, e.g., the water meter hot box or irrigation equipment, will be screened by landscape plantings. This is one sixty five VV in the resolution, there's no change. Number forty seven, the three hundred and sixty two trees that are proposed within seventy five feet of each building shall have a caliper of at least four inches. It's gonna, uh, that's one sixty five WW in the resolution. The only change here was that instead of seventy five feet, within seventy five feet of each building, it's within a hundred feet of each building. Um, item forty eight, as the landscape plans are finalized for each building, the extent of hose bibs and the need for automatic irrigation of landscape areas should be evaluated and specified, subject to towns, uh, township staff review and approval. That's one sixty five XX and there's no change to that one. Number forty nine, again, no change to this one. The, the plan shall be modified to include birdhouses and at the applicant's option bat houses. The design and location of same, of the same shall be subject to the review and approval of the township staff. And that's one sixty five YY, no change. Number fifty, uh, the applicant shall make the roof areas other than the areas on which equipment is being located solar ready. The warehouses shall comply with New Jersey Solar Law. The only change here, and it's one sixty five ZZ, is to the reference of that law and it's A three three five two. That's a correction for what was in the original. Number fifty one, um, the CEA in which contamination occurred has been remediated and an NFA has been issued by the DEP. Monitoring wells were installed and have been capped. The elevation of the existing and capped monitoring wells should be adjusted to meet the proposed finished grades. A note should be added indicating the required modifications to the existing monitor, mon, monitoring wells. This is one sixty five triple A, there's no change. Number fifty two, the applicant shall provide a schedule from the property owner for the removal of rubble that will not be used during the project and the existing crushed construction that will be reused. The schedule must be reasonable and is subject to the review and approval of township staff. And that was slightly modified, um, in one sixty five triple B. The applicant shall provide a schedule from the property owner for the removal of rubble that will not be used during the pro, the project and exist crushed demolition material that will be reused. The schedule must be reasonable and is subject to the review and approval of township staff. And it goes on, to the extent that the applicant takes any such material for use in the construction of the warehouse development, it will test the materials and provide a certification, materials are in compliance with NJDEP site remediation standards for their intended use and the testing shall cover asbestos. Um, one sixty five triple C is newly added. Um, this was the item that should have been in, but may have been overlooked, but it simply memorializes the condition attached to the waiver having to do with the counting of the trees. And that's that, says, the applicant shall work with the township to grid out a certain area of the site to estimate the number of trees that would be disturbed by the project and quantify the overall number of trees. Uh, there's just three, um, conditions relating to building and architecture. Those are items fifty three through fifty five of the original list and, uh, there's no change to those, I'll just read them very quickly. The architectural facade design materials and colors shall remain uniform, that's DDD. Um, if offices are not, if offices are not at each corner or less office space at such locations, um, the architectural features shown on exhibit A fourteen, which is proposed elevations facility B one, prepared by Cornerstone Architects and dated March twenty ninth, twenty twenty two, uh, and the plans shall never, nevertheless remain the same. That's one sixty five triple E. And fifty five is windows that may allow visibility of internal racking or storage should be treated with an opaque finish. And that's one sixty five triple F and there's no change to that. Signage. Um, fifty six, the applicant has provided a gen, a generic wall sign template. Once tenants have been identified, the specific signage should be provided to administrative staff in order to ensure compliance with section two hundred dash thirty two B two. That's one sixty five triple G, there's no change. Fifty seven, if tenant signage conforms to the submitted signage package, such signage can be approved administratively. That's one sixty five triple H and no change. Number fifty eight, signage in a form and location, subject to the review and approval of township staff, shall be provided, um, addressing anti-idling regulations. That was modified very slightly to add the following at the end, and this is one sixty five triple I. The addition of anti-idling regulations shall be enforced at the end. Uh, moving on to stormwater management. There's four, four conditions, none of which changed from the proposed list. So fifty nine was the emergency rules that DEP intends to adopt, known as, uh, PACT, shall apply to the application if the rules are adopted and the rules would apply at the DEP level. That's one sixty five JJJ and there's no change to that. Number sixty, due to the extensive number of green infrastructure best management practices, significant earthwork will be performed and fill imported to implement proposed stormwater management measures. This should be done under the supervision of an NJ licensed geotechnical engineer with testing of each BMP's infiltration rate after construction. A note to this effect should be added to the plans and that's one sixty five K, uh, triple K in the resolution, there's no change to that. Number sixty one, as per code, section two hundred dash one oh five point one, the applicant is required to enter into an agreement with the township in a form satisfactory to the board attorney, requiring the installation and maintenance by the applicant and the applicant successor and can, successors and interest of all stormwater management improvements proposed by the applicant and approved by the board. That's one sixty five triple L, it's no change. Uh, number sixty two, a stormwater BMP maintenance plan has been prepared and found by the township engineer to be missing some, some key elements. The applicant shall address the deficiencies in a manner acceptable to the township engineer during resolution compliance. One sixty five MMM, no change. And by the way, there's a, there's a finding and the findings are fact that address what those deficiencies are and the fact that they are not substantive to this stormwater management plan. They're typically reviewed after construction. Um, the utilities. Uh, this is sixty three, item sixty three.
Keep it quiet while we do this.
Who's sixty eight? Um, sixty three. I said a twenty foot wide easement is proposed along the extension of the sewer line along the north edge of the property with it, which addresses the master plan utilities plan element requirement for the south branch of the Duck Pond Run Sewer Interceptor. The easement will also extend from MH six to the east property line with adjacent lot, lot thirteen to service other properties north of the development. A stable access way to this portion of the system should be provided with a sewer installation for future inspection and maintenance purposes, subject to the, to NJDEP approval of wetlands and flood hazard permitting for the same. Um, this was the same with the exception of the addition at the end of that. Uh, and this is one sixty five triple N in the resolution. The addition is the completion of the south branch portion of the sewer interceptor is required as part of phase one construction. Number sixty four, as two onsite sanitary sewer pump stations are proposed to service the properties on the east side of Clarksville Road as indicated on sheets CU one 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 and CU one one five. Both pump stations are to be privately owned and maintained and approval of them is required from township council per code section one hundred and thirty, thirty three dash fifteen E. Detailed design for both facilities should be provided, subject to the review and approval by the township engineer and are to include a facilities O and M manual provisions for backup power generation and implementation, implementation of odor control me, measures. Um, this is one sixty five triple O. The only change was that after the reference to the township engineer, the addition of the township landscape architect, so it shall also be subject to the review and approval of the, of the township landscape architect. Um, item sixty five, the applicant indicates, um, that it has conservatively calculated the future commercial, i.e. retail restaurants, convenience stores, hotel, et cetera, sanitary sewer demand at a hundred and seventy five thousand gallons per day and provided pipe capacity calculations that indicate the proposed pipe has sufficient capacity for the industrial and future commercial developments. However, no supporting calculations were provided to assess the conservativeness of that maximum flow number or how it had, has been, uh, attributed to the gravity portions of the system and the two pump stations. The sewer report should be updated to include this calculation. This is one sixty five triple P in the resolution, there's no change to that. Number sixty six, any intention by the applicant to seek reimbursement from other future property owners connecting to the sewer main extension should be addressed through the developer agreement process. And that's one sixty five triple Q in the resolution, there's no change to that. Number sixty seven, treatment works approval will be required for the proposed redevelopment. A request to receive sewer allocation should go before township council to be approved by resolution. It's one sixty five triple R in the resolution, there's no change. Number sixty eight, the applicant shall explore the installation of, uh, of a NJ BPU community solar program. One sixty five triple S in the resolution, there's no change to that. Moving on to fire and emergency services related conditions. Number sixty nine, a lockbox to allow immediate access by the fire department should be installed, installed at the front of the building. That's one sixty five triple T, there's no change to that. Number seventy, the applicant should be required by the construction official to conduct a radio signal strength survey of the buildings while under construction and if deemed necessary, a radio signal amplification system shall be installed. Only change there was the addition of the word fire official instead of just, uh, instead of construction official. Um, so the applicant should be required by the fire official to conduct a radio signal strength survey. And that's one sixty five triple U in the resolution. Um, condition seventy one, which had three components to it, there was no change to this and that's one, uh, sixty five triple V. I'll read it, uh, the applicant shall be aware of township fire prevention requirement for before and during construction. Um, F one thousand five point three access, temporary all weather surface access roads, gravel or equipment capable of supporting a thirty ton emergency vehicle should be provided at all times for fire department vehicle, vehicular access to all structures under construction and to all structures used for the storage of and to all structures used for the storage of combustible construction materials. Access of a hundred and twenty five unobstructed feet should be provided at all such locations at all times. Temporary all weather surface access roads should be approved by the fire marshal's office prior to construction commencing. And then F one thousand five point four water supply. The fire protection water supply system, including fire hydrants, shown on the approved site plan should be installed and in service prior to placing combustible building materials on the project site or utilizing them in the construction of building structures. If phased construction is approved, coordinated phased installation of the fire protection water system shall be permitted as approved by the fire marshal. As I said, no change to that, that condition. And then the final category is, is what we call other, which doesn't really come under any of those headings. And there's about ten of these, I think, and maybe a few more. So I'll read those. What was originally number eighty two in the, in the list of potential conditions has become one sixty five triple W. We just changed the order because it didn't really belong at the end of the list. It went, it went at the top of this other category list. So that reads no storage and removal for the sites, Avalon Way extension, both sides of the master plan road, sidewalks and bike ways to be handled by the applicant's property management division. The property management division will also handle any oil spills and provide maintenance for the development. No change to that. One sixty five triple X was newly added, but it was discussed and quite extensively actually at the, the June twenty ninth meeting. And that says, all warehouses should be designed for only storage use group, which is a defined term and is as defined by the New Jersey Building Codes. Number seventy two in the original list, the applicant shall have extended vesting of ten years commencing on the date of this approval. One sixty five triple Y, there was no change to that. Number seventy three. The Dr. Clark House was located on the east side of Quaker Bridge Road between Clarksville Road and Route one. Archaeological exploration bearing in nineteen eighty five uncovered the foundation of this eighteenth century, century, eighteenth century farmhouse. The applicant has retained Richard Grub and Associates to prepare a phase one A cultural assessment as part of the D E P application process. The assessment should be filed with the township once it becomes available. And that became one sixty five triple Z in the resolution. The only change was the addition of the following sentence at the end of that, which, which says, the applicant shall abide by the recommendations of the assessment, including any further study that may be required and recommendations therein. The following is newly added. And that's one sixty five A A A A quadruple A. The applicant shall share with township staff the results of the archaeological work that was done on the south side of Clarksville Road. Number seventy four. The applicant, there's no change to this. The applicant shall install a sign in the vicinity of the former farmhouse where enemy, enemy scouts were captured for later interrogation by the Continental Army. The sign was installed by the Girl Scouts as part of a Girl Scouts project and is in the township's possession. Its location should be subject to the review and approval of township staff. That's one sixty five quadruple B. Number seventy five. The applicant, in conjunction with township staff, shall also evaluate additional signage along the Quaker Bridge Road path, commemorating Washington's march, march from Trenton to Princeton. The location and content of such signage should be subject to the review and approval by the township staff, which will determine what signage will be installed. Installation shall be done by the applicant. The only change here was to, to clarify General Washington's historic march. Otherwise, no change. Number seventy six. The incinerator on the site has been demolished and removed by the current owner. The closure documentation for that unit is associated and associated equipment, including any remedial activities associated with the incinerator, should be filed with the township. That's one sixty five quadruple D, and there's no change to that. One sixty five triple E is newly added. If any more existing structures need to be removed on the site in order for new structure to be built, the applicant shall obtain a demolition permit and certificate of approval prior to a zoning permit being issued. Number seventy seven. Proposed block and lot numbers, street names and street addresses and unit numbering should be submitted to the office of the township engineer and be subject to his approval and review, that's one sixty five quadruple F, and there's no change to that. Number seventy eight. All construction details, including final design of the stormwater management B M Ps and their amenities shall subject, shall be subject to the review and approval by the township engineer. And that's one sixty five quadruple G, and there's no change to that. Number seventy nine. The applicant shall provide two engineers' estimates of probable construction costs for this project. One will include all phase one site improvements for the purpose of establishing the required construction inspection escrow fees, while the other will be used for the purpose of establishing the required performance guarantee amounts. The latter is to consist solely of those improvements in the township or county wide way or improvements ultimately to be dedicated to public entity, as well as any proposed buffer landscaping and bermings is a standard provision. This is one sixty five quadruple H. The only addition here was at the end, the addition of the following in accordance with applicable township codes. Number eighty, as per ordinance section two hundred dash eighty one point one. The applicant shall be required to provide both via hard copy and electronic format approved site plans being submitted for signature and as-built surveys upon project completion. Electronic copies of the stormwater management report and maintenance manuals shall also be provided upon approval of the same. That's one sixty five quadruple I, and there's no change to that one. And then the, the next two were newly added. Again, these are standard conditions that we put into most every resolution. So one sixty five quadruple J. The applicant should pay the affordable housing fee required in accordance with section two hundred dash one twenty six of the ordinance and the statewide non-residential development fee act. And then one sixty five quadruple K. The applicant shall prepare and execute developers' agreements setting forth the applicant's obligation with respect to off-track assessments and certain other conditions of this approval. A copy of this resolution should be appended to the agreement, which shall be subject to the review and approval of the board attorney and which shall be recorded by the applicant. And then finally, number eighty one. Again, a standard condition, other outside agency approvals will also be required, the following are approvals that are anticipated at this time, a D O T major access permit, Mercer County Planning Board, Mercer County Soil Conservation District, Delaware and Raritan Canal Commission, and N J D E P, which is F A, F H A permit, wetlands fill and T W A, construction stormwater discharge permit. This is one sixty five quadruple L in the resolution, and there was no change to that. And that's it.
Thank you, Martina. Take a breath, have some water. Meanwhile, do any board members have any questions, clarifications on any of the content of the conditions for this memorialization? A resolution of memorialization. One comment I would have, a very general comment. The, the, this document as well as the resolution document is full of acronyms. I would say at the first use of, of a possible acronym that it be defined in parentheses so that, to make it easier to the reader in the future to understand what's going on. Or if there's, you know, some strange term or like a monument listing or whatever, you know. Just, let's make it easier for the reader. Are there other questions or comments?
Is there any progress in the N J D O T approval with respect to the master plan road and US Route one access?
I can't comment on that, Jodica, that's, that's really a question that the applicant would have to answer, but this is not the forum for, for that question to be posed. We're, we're treating the applicant just like the members of the public, we're not opening this up for a discussion on the substance of this application. The applicant is represented here, but really only for clarification of what's in the resolution.
Do we know, any, do we have any?
See anything from the D O T?
Okay. Another question. Has the county been contacted with respect to not allowing the truck traffic on Clarksville? If yes, what's the status of that discussion?
Yeah, the county has not deemed the application complete yet. They are waiting for the board to accept the memorialization. So we are in, we have, they are aware of our desires and we have talked to them several times about it. Once they deem it complete, they will schedule a hearing and we will send our attorney, either Jerry and or Martina to those hearings and our, our engineer is in touch with the county engineer about that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just have general comments, I want to thank both Jerry and Martina for doing a thorough job. I mean, it took a while, people kept asking why it's taking so long, it's almost an eighty page document and they reviewed it well and we will post, if you will see, the board members were referring to three different sets of papers. One is the original condition that was posted on the website when the application was voted. Most of you have seen that. This is a memorialization of those conditions that she read. And then they, they created a separate document which we will post on the website too, which will let you map to make sure that every condition that was approved on that day is in the memorialization. So there's a cross-reference between the conditions that were posted on the website and the conditions that are in the memorialization that we will vote on today. So we will post this, so I just want to thank both of you for doing a thorough job. And it did take time, but it was worth taking times to do a good job.
Very much a collaborative effort, the municipal staff also did a fantastic job of, of reviewing and making, making sure that it was accurate.
I wanted to thank Martina for doing a rather thorough job on this and also for preparing extra information because I think we worked very hard on these conditions in order to, you know, in order to mitigate some, some of the issues, particularly with, with the trucks. And we wanted to make sure that none of it got left out when this was put together. And by looking at it from several different ways and several different charts, I think we're pretty comfortable that what we asked for is, at the meeting, is, is in here. And, you know, people say, can we make changes? There's changes, I, you know, there's things we all wanted, didn't want, that's all been voted on already. It was voted on on June twenty ninth and all, all we can do tonight is make sure that what was previously voted on is included in this document. And I'm confident the board's going to be able to do that, thank you.
On condition Z, on page seventy three. It states prior to construction, as part of the pre-construction meeting with municipal staff, applicant shall provide proposed construction routes, including video documentation of pre-con- pre-construction condition of the roads within the township use for construction access. I believe in number twenty five that the applicant was required to make timely repairs of those road conditions if they deteriorated. Can you correct me if I'm?
So you, you, you were referencing one of the, when you said one twenty five, what was that a reference to? Paragraph one twenty five?
In the proposed conditions, item twenty five. Developers agreement shall include language and timely repair by the applicant of deterioration of local roads attributed to construction. Construction traffic, and I don't see a requirement in there for them to make repairs to roads that are damaged by their construction vehicles. I was looking at condition Z on page seventy three.
That may have been an oversight, I'll go back over the transcript and make the correction.
Okay.
Because I, I would have read back that condition as agreed upon at the meeting. I think that was the intent of it. And, and certainly the applicant didn't have any comments on that in the original list. So I see no reason why that can't be added in this instance.
And, and then also on page seventy five, when we referenced the noise studies, the last line says the applicant shall pay for the noise studies, should that not say all noise studies?
Sure.
Rather, it just says, uh, well, noise study.
Let's see, there is.
Because you're asking for several tests.
Yes, you are, and you're also require, I mean, condition of approval is also that the township can, can test the noise levels at any point. Really, I don't think the idea was the applicant would, would pay for all of those tests, certainly that was my understanding, but but certainly in connection with the baseline and the, the post occupancy studies, that was to be paid for.
By the applicant.
By the applicant.
Yeah.
So I'll specify that.
You can change it to the base.
Yes, yeah.
And then under signage. On page seventy seven. Comment, or section G G G. Where we're talking about wall signs. They all, there's also a statement that no signage on buildings are to be illuminated. Did we need to put that in there?
Sorry, see, was that in the original? Was that in the original list? That language about elimination?
No change. It was a statement made by the applicant throughout the hearing. Or was addressed with the applicant in the hearing, that those signs not be illuminated.
If, if that was the testimony, I, I mean, I would have no problem adding that to this condition if the board agrees. I, I can find that quite easily, yeah, thank you.
And on page eighty. Condition XXX, all warehouses shall be designed for only storage. I think in the testimony it said storage and distribution.
Yeah, there was a, a lot of discussion about how that term was defined. I referred to the actual building code, which storage is, is, is the heading that includes a couple of subgroups. So that was the recommendation of the, the engineer.
XXX doesn't refer to storage and distribution. It's refers to Uniform Construction Code definition of storage, which essentially leaves out things like hazardous substances.
Okay, thank you.
Sue, anything else? Sue, anything else? It's not the time for public comment at this time. There's not time for public comment at this time.
Sir, please.
You're out of order, we're not having public comment at this time yet. Thank you. Do, do any other board members have, have things they want to say about the more resolution of memorialization?
No, but I would like to move including all the changes that she read and the four changes that Sue suggested. I would like to move to approve the memorialization of P V twenty one dash fifteen with all the changes that Martina read and the last four changes that Sue suggested. If I, my notes are right on twenty, on on, on condition Z, we add at the end that the developers' agreement shall include language on timely repair by the applicant of deterioration of local roads attributed to construction traffic. Then on G G G, we add no sign will be eliminated. And then on L L, the applicant should pay for the base level testing and other thing. And you have one more?
It was base level and the, and the other testing they were gonna do.
And then there were just a couple of changes that, that Andrea had proposed in her markup. Condition ZZ. Which is to add the word New Jersey solar ready law. A couple of others. Under condition S in the resolution, in little I, slight modification, the applicant shall include the same categories of information in all the reports. Andrea went over these changes. I think that was it.
So I would like to move the memorialization of PB twenty-one dash fifteen with all the changes that we just discussed.
Your motion is on the floor. The motion is on the floor for PB twenty-one dash fifteen. Is there a second to the motion? Is there a second to the motion? The motion is on the floor.
Second, if we want to discuss.
That's addressed in the findings effect. It doesn't change the condition. Creates a problem because the county, if the county disagrees with the conditions of approval, the applicant has a couple of choices. They can come back to the board and request a change, which is unlikely. I think the board is going to impose the same conditions or it takes it up with the county.
Thank you, Martina, for answering.
In general, if county changes any of these conditions, the applicant has a choice either to come back to the West Windsor Planning Board or go to the County Planning Board and get the conditions in sync with each other. So these are the conditions that the West Windsor Planning Board imposed. And we are voting on memorializing. So that becomes what the applicant has to adhere to before they can get a certificate of occupancy.
We have a motion on the floor for PB twenty-one fifteen.
Second.
And seconded by Andrea. Could we please have a roll call vote on the motion to approve with conditions and waivers the resolution of memorialization for PB twenty-one fifteen, Bridgepoint West Windsor LLC.
As modified.
As, right, with the condition.
Mayor Morata?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mandau?
Please, please continue.
Councilwoman Mandau?
Yes.
Ms. Applegate? Ms. Applegate?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Abstain.
Vice Chairman?
Councilwoman Barry is not eligible to vote because she did not vote. As a law, she cannot vote on this, but she, so she has no option but to abstain.
I did say abstain. I abstained.
Vice Chairman Hoberman?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
The resolution for memorialization was approved by the cutting board with conditions.
Four votes?
We need a, we need a closed session. We need a closed session.
Okay, at this time, we will have, we will entertain public comment. You have three minutes for.
There was a vote.
And we've got, we've had court rules.
Excuse me. One vote in favor would have been sufficient under the municipal land use law.
At this time, you have public comment. Please come to the microphone. You have three minutes for personal. Please state your name and address as you start your thoughts. Thank you.
My name's Warren Mitlak. I live at Five Stonely Drive in West Windsor.
Spell the last name, please.
M I T L A K.
Thank you, Warren.
You're welcome. Tonight, I want to bring to your attention a recent court case that was decided in Princeton and written about on centraljersey.com. I believe that Sam Sirtis has a link to the article that was sent to him by Terza Warman. The article was about a decision by a judge to overrule a decision made by the Princeton Planning Board that I think has parallels to what you have just done. In that case, which was about a residential development, the judge ruled against the planning board because the planning board granted a variance that would substantially alter the R four zone defined in Princeton's master plan. The judge ruled that the planning board transcended its variance authority. It is your decision. If your decision is brought to a judge, I think the judge would rule that a variance to allow nine hundred and ten loading docks, where the master plan limits the number to one hundred and forty-seven, would also substantially alter the character of the zone and that you have transcended your authority. Nine hundred and ten loading docks is six times the number allowed in our master plan. I am disappointed that you have approved this project. For anyone who wants to contribute to the fund that we are raising to challenge the planning board's decision, you can contribute on the website, stopthetrucks.info. That is stopthetrucks.info.
Stacy Fox, twenty-nine Berryan Avenue. You see this river? That's Route One. Just last year, it was a hundred year storm. There have been five hundred year storms in my lifetime. I am not five hundred years old. Somehow you saw fit to approve a project that's going to calculate their stormwater management based on maps from nineteen ninety-nine. Storms from nineteen ninety-nine aren't going to happen in twenty twenty-three or fifty years from now or a hundred years from now, but those buildings will still be there. This, there's no room for a single fluid ounce more stormwater runoff. And you didn't even see fit to require this applicant to use current flood maps. That tells me that you're not qualified to approve this mammoth project. That document, I find it hard to consider it a legal document. You cannot tell the police to enforce a no idling rule. You cannot tell a county to enforce your restrictions on a county road. I've already spoken to somebody on the basis of anonymity who is on the board on the county. And they said they are not going to restrict the flow of trucks. So that is just fluff to quiet the public. The answer was no, they will not restrict. So they can put in whatever curb cuts they want and your condition is for not. I want to ask you all, in whatever orderly fashion you can manage it, to step down. You do not represent this community. You have invited burdens in perpetuity to Lawrenceville and Princeton. We're going to get none of the revenues, but they're going to have to invest in emergency services personnel and road infrastructure. The burdens that are going to happen, besides the poison and the sickness and the inevitable accidents, it's going to happen. Someone's going to die. How many of our residents or their residents are you willing to sacrifice just to avoid a lawsuit? And for future reference to avoid a lawsuit, maybe just legislate. I learned that from my friend Terza. You didn't have to just give them what they wanted. You could just legislate. And what you said in the beginning about the ordinance having warehouses and even being encouraged is not true. Because you added warehouses to the ordinance during COVID, when everyone was focused on homeschooling and Zoom, when by the time we realized it, we were outside the statute of limitations. So this was not part of our master plan. You all added it. You need to fix this mistake. Thank you.
John Mulcahy, two here for Drive. Just three points. First two are quick. This was when that plan was agreed to approve a diversity of uses, forty diverse uses increased to forty-two, include warehouses. A diversity of uses is not five and a half million square feet of one thing. You know, the largest warehouse facility state in New Jersey, that is just ludicrous. That is not a diversity of use. Second, the state planning guidance that was recently approved. And it came up during the public comments. And there was actually a response, I think, from the lawyer saying, we don't have to follow it because it's only guidance. And that's not the point. West Windsor representatives looking out for the interest of West Windsor residents should be what drives you to want to embrace the guidance to get to the best decision possible for the township. The third point comes back to the loading docks. I heard a lot about, oh, we should have trees that are this diameter or they should be eighteen feet apart instead of sixteen feet apart. Well, we should cut the grass down to three inches. All this, a lot of, you know, fluff. And here there was a real hammer. They only asked for one thing. They only asked to increase the traffic six hundred percent. They only asked to increase the truck traffic six hundred percent. It was only the thing they asked for, so we gave it to them. When my wife and I put on an addition for our house to accommodate for special needs, we had to jump through hoops. We had to, you know, fill an inch high, you know, stack of paper and take hundreds of photos and notify anybody and everyone that would potentially be impacted in our area. So we would not be destroying the fabric and character of the community. And here, a six hundred percent increase on top of what was already a monstrosity of a project, this non-conforming monstrosity, it was just waved on through. There should have been notification door to door in those, you know, certified, you know, mail envelopes to every resident in West Windsor that could be impacted. Well, let them know what's going to happen today. Could be here. And that didn't happen. It was just waved on through. I think you overstepped your authority in approving that variance without proper notification. It lacks fairness and transparency and it holds the residents to, and the conglomerates to a double standard where the residents are held to a high bar and the mega corporations just can do whatever they want. I don't know if it's out of fear or, you know, some other motivation, but it's just wrong.
Ajay Kaist, Twenty Haskell Drive.
Spell the name, please.
It's A J A Y. Last name is K A I S T H.
Thank you. And your address?
I said it, but I'll repeat it. Sure. Twenty Haskell Drive. Do you need a spelling?
No, we're good. We're good. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Five point five million square feet on six hundred and forty-three acres, including wetlands. Nine hundred and ten loading docks. Reminder that one hundred and forty-seven does not equal nine hundred and ten. Expected daily traffic. This is by the State Planning Commission. Seventeen hundred and forty vehicles per million square feet. Do the math. Nine thousand five hundred and seventy per day. Stick with the math. Four hundred per hour on average. Stick with the math. Six per minute on average. More during peak hours. Each eighteen wheeler truck, seventy to eighty feet long. Visualize this. Visualize this. Seventy trucks back to back are a mile long. We are talking about four hundred trucks on average an hour, five miles long, back to back. Several will make our way Village Road, which was left out of this discussion. Clarkson Road through West Windsor, past our schools, past our homes, clogging our entrances and exits, choking Route One, choking Quaker Bridge Road. We are nowhere near the turnpike. We are nowhere near a major highway. Who in the bright mind would have allowed such a project? Lower property values, more traffic, more air pollution, worse health outcomes, more noise, less safety, more flooding, twenty-four by seven traffic in our neighborhoods. Impact to us, higher cost on our pockets, lower property values, all the negatives that go along with it. Higher cost to us for infrastructure maintenance and township services. Higher cost to us with more carcinogens in the air we breathe. Higher environmental costs from flooding impact. Higher costs in lives, safety of us and our children and the neighbors. Higher cost in quality of life, noise pollution, light pollution, more traffic, more potholes, more damage to roads. This vote decision was rushed through without adequate opportunity and involvement of the township residents. As somebody alluded before, a letter should have been sent or a referendum should have been held on such a major life-changing option that you have agreed upon. Inadequate studies have been done, whether they have been on township services, on pollution, on environmental flooding, on traffic. I just want to close with the most respected member of the planning board's statement, some excerpts from it. He's not here today, but I want to thank him for it, Alan Shactel. Only one who made a statement on that vote on June twenty-ninth. None of you, none of the four present here who voted, please, please do read his statement. Let me, can I reuse conclusion? May I finish with this conclusion because you took some extra time with my name, etc. and spelling? Thank you. I appreciate it. So I'm just going to come to the conclusion. I can excerpt from the statement. Thank you. Thank you. So I'm just going to read Alan Shactel's statement. No, no, I'm excerpting from it. I'm excerpting from it. Is that all right? I'm excerpting a few sentences from it. He starts, first in my forty-six years experience as a planner, I thinking that might be a lot more than any of you have. I've reviewed cop shopping centers, apartment complexes, warehouses, complexes, et cetera, et cetera. While many of them had conditions of approval, never have I encountered an application like this which requires eighty conditions of approval as being contemplated for the board. From my perspective, quote, from my perspective, no matter how many conditions are proposed, they don't get to the underlying problems noted by the public and by myself. There have been no studies provided for the intersection of roads that includes five seventy-one and Clarkson Road, where our high school is located. No traffic impact study has been done to the intersections of the high school on Penlisle and Clarkson Road, at North Post and Clarkson Road, where we have many commuters coming to and from the train station. None at Meadow Road and Clarkson Road either. There is also no plan to study tractor trailers from utilizing Village Road. I've seen enough gasoline carriers, et cetera, et cetera. The traffic engineer utilized a methodology that analyzes directional flows during peak periods only. These studies work for conventional land users. Unfortunately, these traffic studies did not consider the specialized nature of warehouses of magnitude proposed. In my experience, truck traffic may be experienced throughout the day and evening. No analysis of such movements was made. I think West Windsor is a family-friendly town, always prided itself. Proposed project becomes a threat to the safety of our schoolchildren. It presents a threat to schoolchildren from Morris Hawk as well as Vesprins or Plainsboro South. It increases truck traffic. And then there's a whole bunch of statistics about how many people have been killed because of traffic accidents. The proposed warehouses themselves are massive in scale. The spacing between buildings are small and the notes on the buildings are on the same plane. So the end result and the note on the, the buildings are on the same plane. So the end result is, when you're driving down Quaker Bridge Road, you're going to see one building over a mile in length, which from my perspective, is not a pretty picture. And I conclude that in looking at the purpose of zoning and the municipal land use law, and looking at the flaws that I've noted in the application and numerous conditions, this is the key. I don't believe, that, those are my words, I don't believe this application will promote the public health, safety, and welfare of West Windsor needs citizens, which of course is a major purpose of zoning. So what you are memorializing today is actually a disaster in West Windsor. Thank you for your time.
I'll be brief. Let me just get a gauge. How, how many more speakers are there? Can you raise hands, please? One, two, three. Do I see more than three? Okay, the three that raised their hands, you may speak, will end with that. Go ahead, sir. Hi. No, I, I, I said public comment, the, 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 the public comment is limited to the, the original 15 minutes, but, uh, we are accommodating with, uh, those who still want to raise their hands, even though we're beyond that time. So the, the three persons that raised their hands, they can, they can, they can speak. Go ahead, sir.
Hi, my name is Daniel Weiss, 15 Canoe Brook Drive. I'll be brief. It was very nice to see how much time and effort you all made to read this document and fix all the typos. It's kind of sad that you didn't spend the same amount of time to understand the facts. That you have an attorney who actually states that 80 waivers is standard? I have lived in West Windsor for 30 years, and I have never seen such an embarrassment of a municipal function. What I see in front of me is a bunch of sycophants who have no, no clue and no authority and no understanding of how to make proper decisions for the benefit of the town that they are supposed to be serving. And so I echo the request, and I will restate that as a demand for all of you to resign your positions and make way for people who actually care about our community. Thank you.
I got it. Thank you. Thanks very much. Appreciate it. Uh, I'll hold it. I'll hold it. Okay. All right. Thank you. Um, my name is Felicia Davincenzi, and I actually live in Lawrence Township. My address is 21 Springwood Drive.
Felicia, could you spell your name, please?
D as in David, E, V as in Victor, I, N as in Nancy, C as in Christopher, E, N as in Nancy, Z as in Zoo, I.
And your address in, in Lawrence Town?
21 Springwood, that's one word, Drive.
Thank you, go ahead.
I live very close to Main Street. My husband and I are lifelong residents of Mercer County. We, it's a short drive to Costco, our house. And I have relatives and friends throughout West Windsor, Lawrence, Princeton, and the Hamilton area. While you're pushing a message that you're going to have tax revenue from these warehouses, you're failing to give the cost-benefit analysis of all the West Windsor staff, be it, be they police, firefighters, planning board, municipal staff, reading and monitoring all these exceptions you've created in perpetuity. All these reports being generated by your, by the residents, or, excuse me, the renters of the property, they're all generating costs for your township. Because it costs money to hire more police to monitor whether or not a truck is idling or to read all those reports you expect to get from the owners. Also, those of us in other townships will be carrying the burden of your decisions because the flooding and the traffic problems were not, will not be limited by a municipal map. So I'll be paying for any DOT changes, any county road changes, any, um, state troopers looking out for truck traffic where it doesn't belong. Retail businesses and restaurants in the surrounding areas are thriving, but the traffic you will generate with your decisions will choke them as motorists avoid the area. It is counterintuitive that you would sabotage the efforts of Lawrence, Princeton, and your very community to generate retail business and revive underutilized areas just to serve the interests of one applicant. There have been sufficient informs available to you around the dangers of this project. So the idea that you'd allow it to advance without the proper research on traffic impact, without disregard for the prevailing advice and best practice from subject matter experts in the DEP, the state, the county, it'll likely feed future claims brought about, about you in court. It's going to happen. Perhaps you're banking on other authorities to minimize your liability by blocking the project down the line, but by then the damage will be done and we'll have, the undeveloped land will be cleared of its flora and fauna. It'll be just concrete there, and it won't be utilized because everybody will be in court for years.
Good evening. Theresa Warman. W A H R M A N. Five Stonely Drive. I know just about everyone who I'm looking at tonight, and I say this out of love, okay? I really do. I think we are going in the wrong direction. We've lived in town for 18 years. I'm a biker. My husband's a biker. There are a lot of recreational bikers in this community. And I reference back to the state planning guidance, which many towns are looking at as a good blueprint for them. So that guidance contains the numbers that my neighbor Ajay referred to. 1,740 trucks and cars per million square feet per day. And multiply that by five and a half, and it's roughly 9,500 additional trucks and cars per day in our beautiful township. And I reference the recent article in Forbes, ranking this community among the eight or 10 best to live in the country. We all live here. We all enjoy it. Many of us have sent our children to our fabulous schools, and many of our children and grandchildren come back to visit. It's a wonderful place. Please, please, please think this through, and, uh, Felicia is right. Do we really want years and years of litigation? Because this plan will not conform with the county, and Stacy is right. The county does not have the authority to restrict truck traffic on its roads. Please rethink what you've done tonight, and I can assure you, I will be looking at the municipal land use law and your, and your statement counsel that one vote tonight was sufficient for this to go forward. Thank you.
Cam, you are the final speaker tonight.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm, I'm very nervous, um, and you guys are very intimidating, uh, but I am actually, yes.
Let's get your name.
Yes. My name is Susanna Wasniak, and I live at 400 South Post Road. Actually, unlike everyone who's spoken here, I just moved here in January. And so this is a huge surprise to me. I also referenced many reviews about great towns to move to. And I have two small children, one of them who has, uh, special needs, and I came here because of the public school system and the wonderful place to live. And I have to say, I've seen these signs around town. I've been here since January. They're the only reason that I had any idea that this was going on. I finally, I had no idea as a new resident that there was a June 29th meeting, which I surely would have attended. And finally, after seeing the signs, I'm a marketer. I know you have to look at something many, many times to finally click. I sat down just a few days ago and looked on the website at the size and scale of this project. I have to say, as someone who just came to this community, I commend all these people who have roots and history here, but as a new resident, I have to say, this really changes my, my thoughts about staying here, and I think it will drastically change people's views. I myself live right off of Old Trenton Road. There's already a lot of trucks coming there. What about that road? It's already hard to get out of South Post Road, which is adjacent to Mercer County Park. There are people speeding. How am I going to keep my children safe coming out that way on Old Trenton Road? Are there going to be trucks there? There are so many unanswered questions. And I just, I find this whole process to be shocking. It's my first ever planning zoning meeting. And last thing I'll say is, I myself am planning a renovation on my house, and I have to apply to the zoning board and get impermeable coverage permits, and I am not even allowed to go one inch over what is allowed because of stormwater draining, yet behind the park, right in my own backyard, there's going to be millions of square feet of impermeable coverage. So I'd like to thank you for your time, and I would like to ask that you be more considerate of these people. These are our lives and futures at different stages, and we're just asking you to hear us out. So thank you for granting us extra time and the three minutes and listening to us and not being so condescending. It's very, very emotional for all of us, I think. Thank you.
Um, uh, at this time, we have concluded our public comment. We've also pretty much concluded the meeting, except that the planning board will be needing an executive session to go over one set of minutes. So, uh, I'm not really, I can't really adjourn the meeting because we're doing the.
Take five-minute break. Take five-minute break, so.
Take, take a five-minute break, um, and then we'll do the, uh, executive session. Okay, take five minutes.